I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of June 14, 2023. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available online or at the Planning Department, Room 213. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking lot across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cell phones may not be used in the chamber during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The Planning Commission action today is final on the following items: Special Permit 1.6, Special Permit 0842A, and 4.2, Special Permit 23021. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held May 31, 2023.
So move Campbell.
Second, Joy.
Shelley.
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Cor.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Rothenberg.
Yes.
Reiman Yost.
Yes.
Ederton.
Thank you. Oh, yes. Sorry. Minutes approved, nine to zero. The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Shelley to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item not on the, or on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Item 1.1, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 23008, review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, amending two projects in the capital improvement program, new water pumping stories and transmission and new water supply wells. Next item, 1.2, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 23009, to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment to the North 27th Street Corridor and Environment Redevelopment Plan to identify the Fworth Church redevelopment project to redevelop the historic designed church into 10 to 12 apartments and a neighborhood service facility on property generally located at 2980 Holdridge Street. Item 1.3, Change of Zone 08011A, to amend the Cedar's PUD plan unit development to expand the facility to include an approximate 9,000 square foot indoor recreation facility and a shelter expansion for an additional six apartment units on property generally located at 6601 Pioneer's Boulevard. Item 1.4, Change of Zone 08041F, to expand the Pine Woods PUD planning and development by approximately 9.78 acres with a change of zone from AG Agricultural Residential District to R3 Residential PUD, over the 9.78 acres of land, all to add on approximate 22,000 square feet of floor area for a club on property generally located at 6401 Pine Lake Road. Item 1.5, Change of Zone 23050, from AG Agricultural District to AG Agricultural Residential District on property generally located at 8450 Bufford Drive. Item 1.6, Special Permit 08042A, for the Tarot Garage to allow for the reconstruction and expansion of a nonconforming garage with waivers to the side and rear yard setbacks on property generally located in North 30th and Q Street. This is final action on this special permit. Item 1.7, Miscellaneous 23004, to review the proposed determination that the 56th, 70th, and Fletcher redevelopment area be declared blighted and substandard as defined in the Nebraska Community Development Law. The study area is approximately 1,007 acres, generally located between 56th Street on the west, Salt Creek on the north, 84th Street on the east, and Fletcher Avenue on the south. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on these items?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting these sites to be disclosed?
I don't see any, no.
If there is anyone here wishing to speak on that consent agenda item, please stand and state that item.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak on an item that's on the consent agenda? If so, please stand and state that item.
You're talking about 4A?
No.
No, that's still coming up. Yep, thank you. Seeing none, I will take a motion.
I'd move we approve the consent agenda.
Second, Joy.
Shelley.
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Cor.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Rothenberg.
Yes.
Reiman Yost.
Yes.
Ederton.
Yes.
Motion approved, nine to zero.
Thank you. There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearings. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should name their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes. The clerk will then indicate you have one minute remaining to wrap up the testimony. Once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide them to the clerk. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
First item for public hearing is item 4.1, Text Amendment 23008, to amend the Lincoln Municipal Code, Chapter 27.63.610 Neighborhood Support Services, to remove 27.63.610B. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No.
Emma Martin, 555 South 10th Street. This is an application. The applicant is Family Services Lincoln, and it is linked with the special permit on today's agenda, but it is a separate hearing because it will impact all neighborhood support services in the future. So this is a proposed application to amend Lincoln Municipal Code 27.63.610, Condition B. The proposed amendment would remove Condition B in order to allow neighborhood support services to be located in any new or existing structures and also remove the requirement that structures be adjacent to a park, school, place of religious assembly, or neighborhood center, as long as a neighborhood support service meets all other requirements under This special permit, 27.63.610, was approved in December of 1989 when a church was interested in having a home directly to the east of their structure be used as a meeting and activity center for both the church and the neighborhood. Previously, nonprofit religious educational and philanthropic institutions had been permitted in higher residential density areas, and this special permit would allow these uses to be used in R1 through R5 zoning. Condition B was written so that neighborhood support service centers would be in locations that were already integrated into the neighborhood and utilized by residents, and the restrictive nature of Condition B, which only permits such uses in existing structures that are, as noted, adjacent to or contiguous with churches, school, or places of religious assembly, schools, parks, or other support centers. That restrictive nature was approved due to legitimate concerns surrounding the effects of uses for these certain residential areas, but over time and with experience, we have shown that neighborhood support services are often supported by residents, and in the 34 years since this was approved, experience at the local and state level have shown that locating social services within neighborhoods where they are in easy walking distance and are more personable benefits individuals and families using those services. Take, for example, the Child Advocacy Center, which is located at 5025 Garland Avenue. It's an example of a neighborhood support service type of development. While the Child Advocacy Center is under a use permit and is not under the special permit for neighborhood support services, it is located within a neighborhood and is directly across the street from R2 and R5 zoning, and when the CAC sought to expand their footprint in early 2023, there were no neighborhood objections. It has a large footprint and will eventually cover three parcels, but its presence is generally supported and provides important services for children and families in crisis. This proposed amendment is supported by the 2050 Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan supports complete neighborhoods within Lincoln where residents can access services to meet daily needs within 15 minutes of their residence, including public open spaces and recreational facilities, and it also notes that great neighborhoods combine elements of parks, education, commercial areas, environmental resources, and housing together in one place. This amendment allows organizations more options in finding a location within existing neighborhoods, and these services are very valuable to the quality of life in new and older neighborhoods. And we recommend approval, or the Planning Department recommends approval.
Thank you, Emma. Questions for Emma?
I have a quick question. Just neighborhood support services constitute what type of organizations? You mentioned services as one, my portfolio is.
Yeah, so it is a very broad category. It are, they are services that are human, social, educational counseling, health, and other support services provided primarily for the support of persons residing in adjacent residential areas, which occur frequently and so require facilities in relative proximity to places of residence. So it could be anything potentially that is deemed useful to the neighborhood. The caveat here is that it must be provided by a nonprofit religious educational or philanthropic institution, and it must be deemed as useful to the neighborhood and not the city at large. It is, for example, child, sorry, neighborhood support services could be community centers because that serve a specific area, but they must prove that they are for that specific area if that, sorry, does that clear that up?
No.
Okay. Other questions for Emma?
Emma, can you tell me what kind of neighborhood outreach was done?
There was a, well, for the special permit, which will be discussed later, there was a community or a neighborhood meeting. For the text amendment, this, it was a legal ad.
Okay. And so the text amendment, obviously, we're talking about changing or removing Section B or letter B, which in terms of what's already in place, what this does is it removes the requirement that it be an existing structure and that it be adjacent contiguous or separated or close to a park, school, or place of religious assembly.
Yes.
That's really the only change that's being recommended through this ordinance. Is that correct?
That is the only change, yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Emma? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, because this is a text amendment, is there an applicant for this?
Yes, family service.
Okay. So we'll now take testimony from the applicant.
My name is Tim Gergen with Clark &amp; Anderson, 1010 Lincoln Mall. The special permit is going to be in line with our next public hearing. We've met with city staff on this. They were in agreement, and we're in agreement with what we need to do to get the text amendment revised. I do believe, after speaking with Planning Department, we are planning to have this on the mayor's roundtable before or during right around our city council hearing date. Any happy, any questions you have?
So you, in reviewing the plans, it became apparent that this change to the ordinance would be required in order to kind of carry forward those plans, so you made that recommendation and kind of worked with staff?
That is correct. In our preapplicate, our pre-admission plans, meetings with the city, that is what came about on that.
Great. Questions for the applicant?
This does give me slight concern that, just from the text amendment viewpoint, that neighborhoods haven't had a chance to weigh in on this yet, and that's going to be really close timeframe. If I'm doing my math right, you would go to city council on July, oh, on July 10.
Correct.
And that's the same day as our?
The mayor's roundtable.
Hmm. If you delayed two weeks, what does that do to your project?
Unfortunately, we have a closing date with the owner, and getting to this process has taken us quite a bit of while to do a lot of engineering documents and documentation, and so we've extended already with the existing owner our closing dates already.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Thanks, Tim. Right now, we'll take testimony in support of this application. Testimony in support? Is there any neutral testimony or testimony in opposition? Yep, come on forward. We just need you to state your name and your address for the record.
Jessica Lemon. I live at 5027 Alesworth.
Thank you.
Considering this is a text amendment and would affect the entire city, I believe that the entire city should be informed of the text amendment and be given proper time to research, discuss, and form opinions. Our neighborhood has been informed of this, but I know people outside of the neighborhood who have no idea about it, and I believe that the rest of the city has the right to know.
And you said "has been informed"?
Yes, our neighborhood, but the rest of the city, not, not that I'm aware of. And regarding the Child Advocacy Center that was mentioned, it is also very close to our neighborhood, and I would like to state that it is right next to a park. So the traffic from the park and whatnot is overlaps with the Child Advocacy Center, so perhaps the effects from that, also the relative closeness to Wesleyan University, does change how the advocacy center might be related versus the proposed one off of Holdridge.
Sure. Any questions? Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it. Additional testimony in opposition?
My name is Ron Brown. I live at 5050 Alesworth. If you go north on 51st Street, you'll run right into my garage there on the corner. To add to what Jessica just said, the advocacy center up there has also got a police center they put inside that building, and it's next to the park. There's lots of parking. Where Children's Services wants to build, we're in a 100-year floodplain. There is no place to park. In their map that they are submitted to you, there's 28 or 29 places to park supposedly, but it's all in the floodplain. That parking lot is on the downhill side of the retention pond. They call it a basin. It's retention pond, but it's not going to catch any of the water coming off of that parking lot. It's going to go out to 52nd Street. It's got a 48-inch watershed management storm sewer pipe that goes down that street. It's already full because we're in a 100-year floodplain. It takes care of all the water, basically from David Drive and Alesworth, clear on 53rd, if there was a 53rd, clear to 50th Street, and there is no room to wiggle anything. Already, when it rains, there's times that the water is up in my front yard at least a foot. So I don't know, we get to page 22 of their, of their PDF file, they said they've got a hold of watershed management, and they've checked off on all this stuff. I don't see how they could have because there, there is water problems. Now going a little bit to wherever they want to build these 10 homes at, the first one, right on the corner of 51st and Alesworth, they want a waiver to put it so close to the street that if anybody comes down 51st Street and wants to turn and go to the east, they can't hardly see. Anybody coming out of their driveway, or they call it an alley, coming out after they drop their kids off, they can't see to the west or to the left because the first building is going to be so close to Alesworth Street. It's going to be raised six foot out of the ground to read the flood zone plan. Those houses are going to look out of place for one, and two, they're too close to the street. That's why we have offsets for houses, is to get them back away from the streets a little ways. Plus, the gymnasium they want to put in. You figure a gymnasium, the basketball hoops are 10-foot high, you have to have someplace for the ball to go airborne to get into that hoop, so 15-foot a gymnasium, plus five-foot above that for the rafters, and it's already going to be out of the ground for six feet because of the flood zone. You're going to see a building on the corner of 52nd and Holdridge, it's going to be somewhere around 25 to 30-foot tall, and it's just not going to fit into the neighborhood. Yes, I understand, something needs to be built on that property. I've lived there for 45 years, but this is just the wrong project for that property.
Any questions? Thank you very much for your testimony. Additional testimony in opposition? I will state that we are focusing on the text amendment right now. We will be also having testimony that can be specific to the project as well in either way, so just wanted to clarify that as well. Any other additional testimony in opposition? Staff questions? Sure. Come on up, Emma. We have a couple of questions for you.
Emma, can you tell me what the watershed report was?
I cannot. The watershed is not here right now. If Steve could come up and help out?
Well, that would be, you're talking about the special permit 4.2.
Yeah. So we will be getting into the watershed items on the special permit.
Okay.
Because that's not exactly part of the text amendment.
Right.
And hopefully, our friends at Watershed Management, who promised us they would be here, will be here by that time.
Okay.
So questions for the, related to the text amendment?
So, on future projects, if this text amendment is cleared, would that project still need to come before this commission?
Yes, all, all neighborhood support service centers or services are special permits, so they're not conditional use. You don't have, it's not just you meet a couple of, like, setback requirements and you can, and then you can build. It is, you have to provide an application, and it will be reviewed by the Planning Department, though, sorry. Will it go before planning? Okay, yes, sorry. It will go before Planning Commission, and there is discretion with that. So if you're going to come in and say, "I want to put in a bowling alley," you're not allowed to do that, so.
And then my other question on that, without this text amendment, their project can't move forward? Is that how it's listed? It's black and white?
That is true, yes. If this text amendment is not approved by Planning Commission, then the special permit 23021 cannot move forward. It will not be approved.
Steve Hennerston, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. If I could, I'll just add a little bit more history because the application is from Family Service, but we've actually had several of these over the past number of years, past 34 years, and it, so it's not just Family Service. We've actually found this as a challenge with a lot of the other family service, social service agencies. So when they come to us, and they really want to be in a neighborhood, and that's been a very common theme, is we want to be close to where the people are, but we found this place or that place, it first has to be an existing structure. And so often, a lot of these organizations went 5,000 or 10,000 square feet. Many of them would like to provide recreation on site. So for instance, City Impact on North 33rd Street, they have a little gym as a part of there, they have a big meeting room. This is very difficult to get into an existing structure. And then also, they have to be near a park, a school, or a church, and so often, they have found good sites next to arterial streets, on a vacant lot or a lot that's had a structure that got torn down, but if they're not next to those three things, then they also can't go there as well. And so it, it hasn't just been Family Service, who actually did talk to us about other sites that didn't work because of this issue. And so we really thought, because of, not just Family Service, but what we've seen consistently, and because it is a special permit, it still has to go through the process, there is still review to see if it is an adequate site, we supported the idea that this was the time that this would allow, yes, more flexibility in terms of the site, but with the special permit and with the review, it was appropriate to provide more flexibility because not always we had some other tool to be able to do it. The most recent one is you had a local landmark and a former church that was basically doing this exact thing, neighborhood support services. Well, they were fortunate, the building they had was a local landmark, and all cases, particularly if you have a vacant spot, that's a tool that's not available. So that, that was. So, that was, just to give you a little bit more background, that while the focus here is perhaps in family services, there's a lot of other agencies that this could help as well.
Additional questions for staff? Great. Thank you very much. Applicant rebuttal. Anything you want to add at this point? Okay. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Campbell.
Second. Joy.
Shelley.
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Core.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Rothenberg.
Yes.
Ryman Yost.
Yes.
Ederton.
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
I also move to approve text amendment 23008.
Second. Ryman Yost.
Discussion.
This seems to be a good change that allows some things that have been difficult in the past, and allows them to get into the neighborhoods and have their activities as part of the neighborhood. And that could be a win-win both ways. So, I will be supporting this text amendment.
Other discussion?
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Campbell, and given the limitations of what can be done with no new build and having to be next to, you know, certain facilities, the option to detach from that allows these organizations to be in neighborhoods, so it's a positive thing, in my view.
Yep. Rich?
Yeah, I think this is a good amendment, and I like the fact that future proposals will still have to come before this commission and the city council as well, for neighbors to weigh in.
I'm really struggling with this one. I live, we call 27th Street Social Services Row in my neighborhood, because we got them boom, 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 from Matt Talbot to Good Neighbor Center to Salvation Army, you name it, it's on 27th Street. They are not in the core of the neighborhood, and that's because of this amendment. And to just cross it off with nothing, without the city having any input, any other neighborhood organization having any input, gives me pause. I'm not saying I'm in support of it, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm saying I don't think we're looking at it 100% the right way, just because of where I live and what we deal with. It changes a neighborhood when a service comes in there, and because of my census tract and our income level, Social Services loves my neighborhood. You can get a lot of grant money in my neighborhood. So, does that mean next door I'm going to have a special permit pushed through? In my neighborhood, a working class and have a hard time, as I imagine many of you do, taking off to come testify in front of this commission every time one wants to come into my neighborhood again. So, that is why I take pause. I don't want to hold up the project necessarily. I mean, this is separate, and I'm worried that if we vote no on this to take a step back and really look at it, that we're going to hold up a project. But I wanted to put that on, that's why I'm struggling with the right answer on this one.
Gloria, I do have a question about that, if I can just respond.
Yeah.
I mean, so what is it about that sentence that would be removed? What is it that gives you pause? I mean, what is it that would?
We have some relatively large lots with really tiny houses on them. So, if the duplex next door to me, this is huge, burns down, and we're in my census tract, what are they going to put there? Can it be a special permit come through? And I'm so glad that it does have to be reviewed by this body again. But again, we've had lots of stuff in front of this body that the neighborhood has come out and said, "Please don't do this in our neighborhood," and this group, me included, have voted for it. So, and would they have the presence and the time to take off with 10 days' notice to argue that? This sentence keeps that from happening, because it has to be an existing structure, so they're not going to tear out that duplex to put in. And I know soup kitchen is a bad example, but a soup kitchen right next door, I have it three blocks away, and it does affect our neighborhood. Great service, not arguing about it, don't quote me in the paper. Great service, but it does change what happens on your block of the neighborhood and what people are going to that service to get help.
I guess I look at it from the other side as well, which is that in our central inner city, you know, inner Lincoln core areas, I'm with you, have we, has this previous iteration of this law as it was written, in fact, created these tracts because they were limited? And so, in this way, is this a correction? Is this an opportunity for a course correction to be able to move those community centers to the communities that they actually serve? In the case, I think part of the 27th Street challenge is precisely what you're talking about, but if we then say, "Look, there's greater, there are more options here, there's a greater freedom to use structures that perhaps traditionally have not been adjacent to a park, adjacent to a church, et cetera," will that then create more options and opportunities to move away from these places that have traditionally, you know, kind of stuck in one neighborhood?
Line them all right next to, and I agree, that's why I said I'm not against it. I'm just sad we can't take that pause without holding them up.
I do have some pause, too, that this is a citywide amendment, and so, normally, we have pretty good outreach for that. And so, I'm just, as the chairperson of the mayor's roundtable, I'm wondering, how did this one slip through? So, just because, chances are that the other neighborhoods wouldn't have a problem with this, but, you know, each neighborhood has different compositions and situations, and so, I would really love to see that go through, you know, have some more vetting process, but at the same time, I don't want to hold up this project. So, you know, I think that I'm going to ultimately support this text amendment, but it makes me a little nervous.
I will also support this text amendment. The minimal changes that are made in the text amendment itself and the reach through the city, it's difficult to imagine that with that broader outreach, that it wouldn't necessarily make sense to move forward with it. I appreciate this back and forth and the, kind of, filling in that color as to what the true effect on neighborhoods would be. I think anytime we can provide some flexibility to nonprofits to serve the community in the way that makes the most sense to uplift our entire community is the right way to go, and I will support it. Shelley?
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Core.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Edens.
No.
Joy.
Yes.
Rothenberg.
Yes.
Ryman Yost.
Yes.
Ederton.
Yes.
Motion approved. Next item is item 4.2, Special Permit 23021, to allow for a CUP, Community Unit Plan, in a Neighborhood Support Services building, a property generally located at the northwest corner of North 52nd and Holdridge Street. This is final action. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
Maybe I should have said this before, but I did attend the neighborhood meeting for this project, but I didn't feel like it needed to be at the text amendment. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No. Emma?
Sorry. Emma Martin, 555 South 10th Street. Excuse me. This application is at the northwest corner of North 52nd Street and Holdridge. The land is currently zoned R2 residential and all surrounding uses are R2. There is one dwelling unit on the property under the, under application, and the property is in the floodplain. This application is for a special permit for a community unit plan to develop 10 dwelling units, as well as a special permit for a Neighborhood Support Service Center with an associated community garden. The, today, the property has 10 whole-platted lots that could be used to build 10 single-family dwelling units, so the community unit plan is developing 10 dwelling units. The associated parking lot, which can be seen on the computer, perfect, the associated parking lot will provide 1.5 stalls per residential unit for a total of 15 stalls and 22 stalls for the Neighborhood Support Service for a total of, for a complete total of 37 stalls. The parking is based on five parking stalls for five employees and 17 stalls to accommodate the building to 50 children. The application is associated with text amendment 23008, and there are five waivers also associated with this application. The waivers are mainly to help the development meet the city's new floodplain standards. The structures, both the housing units and the neighborhood supports, the proposed Neighborhood Support Service, will be raised out of the floodplain, while everything else will remain within the floodplain, including the community garden and green space and the parking lot. The waivers include a setback reduction to allow for as minimal grading infill. The application complies with the requirements for a CUP and is compatible with the 2050 Comprehensive Plan and the Planning Department. The infill development is encouraged by the Comprehensive Plan where appropriate, and this would be considered infill, as all other sites are developed, all directions are developed. And the proposed CUP supports that infill, as well as the Comprehensive Plan's goals of accessible housing and healthy and connected people. Any traffic impact will mainly impact Holdridge Avenue and North 52nd Street. Traffic will be residents and generally, parents of children using the Neighborhood Support Service Center. And Mike Minendorf from Watershed is here for any questions.
You mentioned the waivers. Can we talk about the waivers a little bit?
Yes.
And that most of them were with regard to the new floodplain regulations. Can you walk through those a little, in a little bit more detail?
Yes. So, waiver number one is to waive stormwater detention, which is, to my understanding, a common thing when the entire lot is in the floodplain. Mike Minendorf will have to expand on that. Thank you, Mike. Waiver number two is to waive internal setbacks, and that is to allow for lots to be, lots and structures to be closer together within the CUP. It is not waiving external setbacks, so nothing is being moved closer to any existing structures, any existing residences. Number three is to reduce the front yard setback along Ellsworth Avenue, which is, oh goodness, sorry, let me find that. The setback is for lots along Ellsworth Avenue to reduce from 25 feet to 15 feet. Due to the floodplain present on the property, all housing units will, of course, be raised, will need additional fill to raise the units above the floodplain, and the reduction in the front yard setback will help account for the developable area that will be lost due to the grading requirements. So, that one does bring houses closer to other existing structures. And waiver number four is to waive light trespass across internal lines, and waiver number five is to allow required parking to be provided in the common parking lot and outlot, which will be within the floodplain.
Okay. Hello?
Hi. Mike Minendorf, Watershed Division, 555 South 10th Street. The waivers that we've accommodated here, we asked for a follow-up to the request on the detention waiver, and to verify that the sewer system has capacity to handle the changes in the flow rates, and they did follow up on that, and they did verify that the storm sewer on 52nd has capacity to handle whatever they are going to be sent into it, so. Any other questions?
So, there was some concern about the parking lot that's in the middle of the development, or proposed parking lot in the middle of the development, and its relationship to the floodplain and everything else being raised. Can you talk a little bit about that?
So, yeah, parking lots are, can be accommodated in the floodplain, there's no requirement to set them above the floodplain, and so, it meets our requirements.
Okay. Additional questions? Yeah, Dick?
Emma, is the gym raised up also?
The Support Service Center is raised up. The gym is one part of the entire structure, so yes, it will be.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions right now? Yeah, Rich?
We heard earlier about line of sight by reducing the setback. Is traffic written off on this, checked off on this, and they're okay with that?
Yes, so, the sight line is, as long as there's a 15-foot setback, then you're no longer, you're not in the triangle, the sight triangle, so there should be no, the traffic has no issues with that site triangle. Excuse me.
Any other questions relating to stormwater at this time? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Emma?
Just, might be helpful for, by rights, what could happen on this property?
So, as it is today, it is platted to allow, so there's 10 whole lots and two partial lots, so for a total of 12, and 10 of those lots are large enough for 10 single-family homes to build on that. This is R2, so there's limited permitted uses, residential mainly, single-family generally.
R2 allows duplexes?
Off the top of my head, um, sorry, I can't remember.
That's okay.
So, R2 does allow duplexes, but the individual lots are not large enough for duplexes themselves. If they were R4, you could have had a duplex on each one. But yes, definitely, today, you could have come in, done the 10 houses, probably could have even done 11 by just simply replating some of the partial lots.
Great. Additional questions for staff right now? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we will take testimony from the applicant.
I think the city staff did my work for me. Thank you, Steve, Mike, Emma, Tim Gergen, Clark Anderson, 1010 Lincoln Mall. Let's just get our bearings straight and see where we're at here. The property we're talking about is here, this is Holdridge Street, this is 48th Street, right on the edge. This is that newer apartment building, mixed-use building that was just recently built in the last five years, and the floodplain is caused by this culprit here, dead man's run. There's a more blown-up view right now, as you can see what Steve and Emma were talking about, these are the existing platted lots within the block itself. This home is remaining intact. This home just recently got replatted. I assume it's going to be another single-family home, and this home here is going to remain And so, here is our site plan. As you can see, this is the parking lot, the Family Services Port, Neighborhood Support Building is going here. This is Holdridge Street, this is 52nd Street. We'll have a parking lot entrance here, and an alley exit out to Ellsworth, and here is where our 10 units are going to be going along 51st Street here as well. Our water quality and our stormwater detention basin is going here, and then we have a community green space and garden space will be going here in this location as well. Here's the grading plan. We are showing all stormwater development to be coming here and being, coming here and being kind of directed towards our stormwater quality basin. We'll have a pipe, and then it'll pipe out into the 48-inch storm sewer. We've been working with Mike in the last week at Stormwater Watershed Development to review this storm sewer pipe and review the inlets on 52nd Street, and they all do We also have Jeff Deal here to, the architecture of the project, he's going to speak here and present a little bit on the structures himself, and then we have Dennis Hoffman, Executive Director of Family Service, kind of speak a little bit of the program.
Great. Thank you.
And then we'll take any questions.
Jeff Deal, 1717 Vincent Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm representing Deal Anderson Architecture with the architecture firm helping Family Service Lincoln. I'm going to go through and explain a little bit more about how we developed the site plan, the rationale behind locating the buildings, and then go through a little bit about the design of the buildings, so you understand the massing. so you understand the massing and the scale and the design intent. So as Tim mentioned, the row houses will be located along 51st Street and at the corner of Aylesworth. We've organized the row houses essentially in a duplex or triplex-style building psychology with the entrances off of North 51st Street. That would be the entrance for visitors and pedestrians, while there'd be a second entrance to the row houses to the west, to the east, I'm sorry, facing the shared parking lot with the community center. We located the community center itself at the intersection of Holdridge and 52nd Street. With the components of the community center being a small gym, the gym is really meant for after-school activities and will have space for bleachers or anything like that that would support tournaments or league activity. So it's really meant to be sort of a services or activity gym. It'll also include a rec room, offices, and support spaces for the community center, a maker space, and a couple of classrooms. Between the row houses and the community center, we've preserved open space that would include the retention basin that Tim mentioned, play lawn, and a community garden that would be run by Community Crops, which is a partner of Family Service Lincoln. And then finally is the parking lot to the north of that. The entrance to the community center would be through the west side, or that would really read as the front of the building. And we have a circulation spine connecting the parking and Holdridge Street, where we have an existing crosswalk and a bus stop that serves that block. I'll go through a little bit more about the design of that spine in a moment. The row houses will have 10 units total, and each row house will have two to three bedrooms. This is an elevation facing 51st Street. And what we're trying to do is we're looking at the residential context, and each unit will have a gable roof. So we're sort of matching or working with the context and like typical roof lines in a residential neighborhood. Each of the units will have a different color or paint application to it, so they have some individuality to each, sort of in a neutral palette. And then a small canopy over the door facing 51st Street. We're currently looking at how, because Tim mentioned, we'll be five to six feet above the grade plane for the finished floor height of the units. We're currently looking at how to landscape that so it doesn't feel like it's up on a mound of grass. So one thing that we're looking at is the development near 23rd and Vine Street, which I believe is fairly new on the south side of Vine, where if you are on the Vine Street side, there's a, that elevation change, which is about five or six feet, is broken up into a terrace with a retaining wall along Vine Street with some steps leading up to, I believe, a lawn. And then up to the finished floor height of those residences, there's a porch. So that we're, we kind of like how that breaks down the scale of that mound, and we'd be further looking at how the design of that works to break down the scale or make this feel like it isn't on a mound. The materials would be fiber cement board, horizontal lap siding, or board and batten fiber cement panels in a vertical orientation or a combination of both with asphalt shingle roofs. The community center, this is the west elevation facing the open space, the community garden and the play lawn. We've taken the same approach as the row houses, where we're looking to the neighborhood to be contextual with the massing of it. So we're deploying, sort of mimicking a pitch roof scenario, where each of the peaks of the roofs are covering one of the programmatic elements of the community center. The right side of the image, which is facing Holdridge, is where the gym would be located. That's the peak or the tallest part of the building. The peak is 35 feet, which would mean our building height is really the balance between this lower portion of the roof and the peak. So we're probably right above 30 feet for a building height as considered by the city. That roof steps down to another portion here, which would be above the rec center and the primary entrance here. And then finally, the classrooms near the parking lot to the north. The primary building materials would be a wood-like metal siding to mimic the look of vertical siding with a two or, three to five-inch board look. That would be the primary material. Wherever we have windows, entrances, we would treat those banks of openings with sort of a strategy of color blocking to add some accents to the building. And those would be in a muted palette of a few different colors of a painted fiber cement board panel. And then another thing that we're looking towards to mimic the neighborhood is creating a large front porch facing the play lawn. And so because we're, this building will be five to six feet above the grade plane, we really like the idea of having the entrance and then the door to the gym being this covered scenario, and then a porch that serves as a nice transition or outdoor space between the building itself and the play lawn. The east elevation facing the parking lot has the same material palette with windows, with the color blocking at the classrooms. Along 52nd Street facing east, the roof profile mimics what's happening on the west side for the roof profile. And we go from the parking lot to Holdridge Street on this side. In order to break down the large elevation and break down the scale of that, we have a egress stair for the building that's coming out of the gym at that location. So we're recessing that and incorporating or tying the design of the stair into the design of the rest of the building so it doesn't feel like we're just tacking a metal stair onto the outside of the building and then changing the material at that point to break down the length of the building and with painted fiber cement board panels. I should also mention that here, we've added another material that's a clear story material, a polycarbonate, which is a sort of white milky translucent panel that would provide some daylighting into the gym and the classrooms. And that'd be a third material on the building. And then the elevation facing Holdridge, this is the largest elevation. So that's why we've located the gym on Holdridge itself. We've extended the roof overhang to have a little bit more depth or relief to break up that elevation and get some play with shadow lines. And then at the corner where we'd be entering on a 52nd Street is a way of wayfinding. We have a little bit of signage and then painted fiber cement board panels that wrap the corner as indicators to where the entrance to this facility would be. And then finally, this would be the view of the building as you're traveling east on Holdridge. And this is from the, with the community garden and the playground and the foreground. And so you get a little bit more of a sense of the porch that we're talking about and bleacher seating or steps cascading down that as that transition between the building and the playground. So I'll turn this over to Dennis, who's going to explain a little bit more about what Family Service does and their vision for the development. And we'll be available for any questions.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Dennis Hoffman. I'm the Executive Director at Family Service Lincoln. Am I not doing that right? There we go. My address is 501 South 7th Street in Lincoln. So like Jeff and Tim mentioned, Family Service would be the owner and manager of 51 Commons. This picture is our administrative office, which we also own and manage south of the Haymarket. A little bit of history about Family Service. We're actually a very established old organization in our community. We've been around since 1891 in various capacities. So we celebrated our 132nd anniversary this year. We operate with an annual budget of $11 million. We have about 200 employees at any given time, and we also support over 7,000 individuals each year in our six program areas. Those six program areas are school-based therapy, which is behavioral health, housing and support services, childcare food program, WIC, youth development, and most recently, community crops, which joined the Family Service team in January this year. Three of those programs would be directly involved with 51 Commons, and that would be the housing and sport program. As you heard, the community crops program will manage the garden. And then our youth development program would manage the youth center. The Activity Center, or the community center that we've been talking about, our focus, Family Service primary use, will be as a STEAM Activity Center for kids. And STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math. So programming to provide kids, like hands-on learning activities in STEAM will be onsite at the facility during LPS non-school days and also for summer camps. So like, that was mentioned earlier, it'd primarily be a drop-off center. So parents would drop off their kids in the morning. Typically, the hours in programs like this run from 7:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. So yeah, drop-off center where families would drop off, go to work or whatever they're doing for the day, and then come back and pick up their kids in the evening after programming ends. The staff ratio, I think, was also mentioned. We're required to maintain a 1 to 15 staff ratio to operate a program like this. So at any given time, we expect capacity for this program based on similar programs that we run at Riley Elementary and Huntington Elementary would be around 50 kids on any given day. So we would need a staff-to-student ratio of four. So four to five staff at any given time. We also envision the center being used for neighborhood events as a more traditional community center on an as-needed basis. And we also see it as a resource for other nonprofits. So for example, Blix Theater and UNI Place, if they needed a space for a larger production, we would make that available or for practice or what have you. The apartments that were mentioned are affordable housing apartments. Eight of the 10 units are being partially funded by a grant we received from the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. That grant requires that residents that are living in those eight units have income at or below the 185% tile of poverty. So there is that limitation as far as eligibility. Also, Family Service's mission is to help families thrive. So our target population will be families most in need of affordable housing. As far as the apartments go too, Family Service would maintain the apartments, the grounds, and so on would all be done by Family Service, including the community garden. Like Tim mentioned, the community crops is a program now of Family Service, and we would have a fairly large community garden onsite, not only for the tenants who want to grow their own garden, but also for neighborhood residents. The way it typically works is we plot out a 100-square-foot plot, a garden plot, and then anybody in the community or in the neighborhood could then rent that plot for a small fee and then grow local food. And then we also provide education and support to do that, including seedlings and other plants that they can use at no cost. So yeah, I think that's all I have.
Okay. Questions for the applicant?
Great.
Yep.
You mentioned non-school day programs, but do you have before and after-school programs?
We do, but we'll keep running those onsite at the elementary and middle schools that we participate in. Yes, thank you for the question. We're at 21 different Lincoln Public School sites currently, and so we've been providing before and after-school care for really decades now. Eight of those are community learning centers, including Riley and Huntington Elementary, which we see as a feeder to the STEAM Center. So those families are really our primary target.
Thank you.
Gloria?
With these affordable housing, are you going to take, accept Section 8 on those then as well?
Yes, we plan to.
Other questions? Rich?
Yeah, Dennis, you mentioned that you will be maintaining the yards. And just in the hopes of everybody being a good neighbor, you will also provide trash removal?
Yes.
And you'll have some covenants about no abandoned cars and things like that?
Correct. Yes, absolutely.
Quick question with the elevation. How will, will some of them have ramps or other ways of making those townhouses accessible?
Jeff Deal, 1717 Vincent Street. So the units will have steps front and back to access the units. Because of the funding program and the quantity of the units, we are not required to have ramps. We've studied ramps early on in the process, and because of the length required, it really eats up all of the space behind the buildings. So by code or the funding programs that we're under, we're not required to be accessible in that manner.
I was just thinking about, as a parent with young kids managing strollers with stairs. Don't. And I can't come visit. Right. So you wouldn't be able to come to the party? No, just saying. Won't be at the ribbon cutting, just saying.
Other questions for the applicant?
Sure, I have some that are kind of more design in nature. So do these units have garages? Are they in the, on the back? Like, from the center, would they access them or?
So the parking lot will be shared between the units and the community center. So parking lot there, and then it'll be sort of similar walking distance in a, say, multifamily scenario where there's a little bit of a walk.
Garages, so then no driveway or anything that's been parked? Just the parking lot. Okay. I think that's my only question for you guys.
Additional questions? Gloria? You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Testimony in support of this application. Is there any testimony in support?
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. My name is James Michael Bowers. My address is 4206 Tuzlin, and my phone number is 402-441-7515. I currently serve as the representative for Northeast Lincoln on the city council. I was born and raised in Northeast Lincoln, and throughout my entire life, I've worked as a social worker in Northeast Lincoln in our schools. And I've attended and actively participated in various organizations like the Northeast Family Center, which provides similar services to Family Service. In my career as a social worker and during my campaign, one reoccurring theme that kept coming up is the limited opportunities and resources available, particularly for children. A second theme was the fact that Northeast Lincoln gets left behind. There's not investment, and there's a lack of resources in Northeast Lincoln. It is imperative that we prioritize the establishment of safe, supervised, and educational spaces for children if we are to provide them with more opportunities, an issue that we must address as a city. For as long as I can remember, this lot has remained vacant and neglected. The trees and vegetation have become overgrown, transforming it into a potential breeding ground for rodents and an unsightly blemish in Northeast Lincoln. By revitalizing this neglected city block and this investment in Northeast Lincoln, we can instill a sense of pride and unity by ensuring our neighborhoods and our children are not being left behind. I've spoken to several residents in Northeast Lincoln about this project through phone, through email, through my monthly town halls that I hold on the third Thursday of every month, and open office hours that I have in my Hablock office. I had folks reach out after the community meeting held by a family service, and I'm encouraged by- and I'm encouraged by individuals who said that they were in support and eager to see a positive change occur within this lot. I've also been encouraged by folks who were originally in opposition, but once their questions were answered and informed that this project will not lead to an increase in flooding and that the project's infrastructure will be able to handle sewer and water, they became in support. During my tenure on the City Council, we have encountered numerous development proposals, mostly from private builders. It is not uncommon for neighbors to express concerns based on their past interaction with certain developers. However, Family Service is a longstanding and trusted agency in Lincoln. It stands apart. They're governed not only by a dedicated, long-term staff, but also by a community board of directors. Family Service upholds the family, the values of being family-focused, collaborative, adaptable, passionate, preventive, and accountable. As a social worker in Northeast Lincoln who has witnessed firsthand the challenges faced by families, I understand that not all organizations who claim to share these values truly embodies them. However, based on my personal experience working with Family Service and hearing from numerous families, I can confidently attest that they uphold these values every single day. And their values align with Northeast Lincoln. Trust me, this is the neighbor that you are going to want to have next door to you. If it's not Family Service, it'll be a private developer. With Family Service, you get a community-governed board of directors. You get an agency that has longstanding and depends on having good community engagement, and a neighbor that's focused on service with their nonprofit model instead of some negative attributes we've seen to some developers and realtors. I firmly believe that Family Service will be an exceptional neighbor, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Additional testimony in support? And we will now take neutral testimony or testimony in opposition? Yeah?
Jessica Lehman, do I need to spell my last name again? All right. 5027 Aylesworth. So yesterday was an important day for me. It marked the one-year anniversary when I signed a mortgage on my house. I am by no, that mortgage will last longer than I have been alive. I am by no means wealthy, and neither are my neighbors. I chose this house, though, because it was in a quiet neighborhood with big, beautiful yards. And now, one year later, I stand here to defend it. I moved into a R2 neighborhood because of the very nature of an R2 neighborhood. An R2 neighborhood, an R2 zoning is designed to preserve the existing low-density residential development, which means it's designed to protect the rights of property owners. This CUP attempts to unnecessarily burden a working-class neighborhood by overcrowding us with an overly ambitious, this project that goes well beyond the standards of R2 zoning. And that, in their proposed project that we were provided, it omits several waivers that might be needed in order to go forward with this project, in my opinion. The most obvious of these, these omissions was in the three-unit buildings that you saw, lots four and five on the provided map and planning. R2 is specifically a single-unit or double-unit neighborhood. That means that the three units are being put in without a waiver. Additionally, the, the proposal to reduce from a 25-foot setback to a 15-foot setback is, would be along both Aylesworth and 51st Street. However, there is no waiver for the setback along 51st Street. And this project and its all, and all of its ambition would drastically increase the amount of traffic that that would, that would occur on, that could occur on Aylesworth and 51st Street. Considering the alley that would exit onto Aylesworth, someone might as easily go left as right and would be going down this, and the increase of traffic while reducing the visibility. It's already not the greatest visibility driving there in the early morning, and parents dropping off kids before school, after school, in a rush. We've all been there. If you just miss something, it could end tragically. Now, they're trying to cram four units with a total of 10 dwellings into along 51st Street with, which would mirror what is only three units on the other side. Those, and, and they don't really mirror it. Because of the raised ground, there is a section in the municipal code, 3.75.41, I believe, that says that the first floor of houses going in should match 50% or half or more of the houses on the block, which by raising them, it would not. And there is no waiver for this. And it is...
One more minute?
It is my belief that the three units were done in order to achieve spacing between the buildings inside because the spacing between buildings could not be achieved with, if it was only done with two units per building. And so this further states the over-ambitious nature of this project. Essentially, there is no need to crowd 10 units onto this single street where they would have been spread out. And perhaps the neighborhood would be in far more willingness to consider this project if the two, the two projects were at the very least separated. If it was not a community center and residential, it's simply too much to fit on our block.
Time? Thank you.
Can you, yeah, can you, there's a couple of maps up there. Hopefully, you can use one and put it on the viewer. Can you point out to me where this alley is that you referenced?
Um, it was, so, in these plans, it would run through here. Thank you. This is the alley I'm referring to.
Okay.
It leads onto Aylesworth here.
Thank you. I want to make sure I was thinking of the same thing.
Any other questions? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Additional testimony in opposition?
This okay?
Yes.
I'm Dave Dahlke, 5042 Aylesworth Avenue. And I'm really unhappy about the neighborhood disruption by this proposed low-income housing mini-campus. Who knows how it may be expanded in the future or for what purpose? It has a very large footprint, parking lot, non-standard housing, office complex, classroom, gymnasium, garden, and who knows what else that we're not being told about? And who knows what will be taught in those classrooms, or to whom, and by whom, and for what purposes? And we pay for the instructions and the instructors as well. In the meantime, we get to enjoy lots of strangers coming through our area, increased vehicular traffic, increased police, fire, and rescue operations, monumental amounts of money spent just in the preparation, and then for the construction, building, maintenance, security, lower property values, higher taxes for other infrastructure needed to support the campus and its operations, and other expenses not known. Not to forget about educating and paying for the staff and the administrators, their vehicles, and perks. One person told me, if you want to meet your new neighbors, just go down to the southern border as they're coming across by the thousands every day. I see this operation as nothing more than someone's political pet project with future political aspirations as the focus. I'm not in favor of making sure someone's financial and/or political investments are paid off my back with my taxes and those of my neighbors. If certain groups are so interested in alleged family values, then change the codes to make Lincoln Housing more family-friendly so that kids have more room to run and play in their own backyards and neighborhoods. Row housing with community gardens and playgrounds is not the way forward, in my view. In case you don't remember, we're already living in low-income housing in this neighborhood now. What you're proposing is just a slum in the making, and we've had our share. Some other area would be better suited. We already have enough of these government programs and structures in our area. I haven't even mentioned increased parking, street widening, new sewers and water lines, and the flooding issue that Ron has already touched on. You don't mind telling us what we can and can't do with our property other than reminding us that it's not really our property anyway. But you don't miss a beat when it comes to doing exactly what you want to do, no matter what it actually benefits the community, or if it's even legal. The laws are often changed to accommodate. Taking this zoning as an example, we know we're zoned residential only, so that's going to have to be fixed. The zoning change signs didn't even go up until after somebody complained. I think we all know what this is really about, not so much about low-income housing, more about ESGs, environment and social governance, or DEIs, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and sustainability. All globalist and socialist programs and goals. This is nothing but a hidden political agenda in the making and political opportunism. This is how I see it, in my opinion, and I don't believe you're benefiting the community with either the proposed campus or a large apartment complex.
One more minute?
We've got enough of those also, considering parceling it out to home builders for compatible, child-friendly homes, or make a nice park out of it. But don't obligate me to make good on somebody else's investment. That's how I see it, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Additional testimony in opposition?
Hi, my name is George Harmon. I live at 5007 Aylesworth Avenue. You keep talking about floodplain. I'm new to Lincoln. I've only lived here about 10 years, but my wife has lived in our house for 30 years. Now, she said years back, there was a promise that there would take all those houses out of the floodplain so people could get along to buy a house. Her daughter wanted to buy a house years back and couldn't get it. And of course, we know flood insurance now is quite high. And I told my wife, has anyone ever looked at the creek? Dead Man's Run. And I went to a meeting about three, four years ago when they were talking about it. And I brought up to the people, I says, the reason it floods is that west of the bridge on 48th Street, there is a grove of trees growing in the creek. This will reduce the flow of water when it comes down there with heavy rains. I've seen this all my life when I lived in Iowa with small streams and creeks. You get a heavy rain, no one maintains them, the water backs up, and it floods. There needs to be a clear path all the way down. I even noticed after this last rain, Antelope Creek, terrible. Trees in it, weeds. You know, if you got, it's smaller than a Dead Man's Run. And if you got a heavy rain, it will flood. And I think they anticipated it down there just east of downtown. But my wife said years ago that they would take the city had promised to get it out of the floodplain. And obviously, it's going to happen again, like I said, with the no maintenance on that creek and Dead Man's Run. So, and then you're talking about a retention pond at the corner to catch any runoff of this entity you want to build. But I understand it's just a place for water to set. Friends of mine who lived in housing districts in Pot County have them in their neighborhoods. And I don't know why, but they put them in. And he says, now, I live next to a swamp, and the mosquitoes are bad. So they need to think about that retention pond that after the rain has quit and the creek went down, pumping it out. Or use that water for that community garden that you want to put in, you know, for irrigation for dry time. The only other thing I have to say is you want to exit traffic onto Aylesworth. Aylesworth is too narrow. When you get two cars on each side of the street, you're lucky to get a garbage truck through there. And it's already bad now at rush hour in the morning and the afternoon. A lot of people take a shortcut through our neighborhood to get onto Holdridge East. And of course, there's no speed limit, so they drive like crazy. And that is one of the things I don't like about it either because the city has, is too cheap to put a longer green light on most of your turn interchanges. It's terrible that only two cars can get through when there's 20 and one to go. And I've seen that many times over, and I think that's ridiculous. It's obvious you can use the same amount of energy for a yellow one. So again, traffic is an issue. Road's too narrow. You should put a roundabout, since you do like roundabouts, have the traffic going. In on 52nd, make a roundabout and go right back out the same way. You're not affecting all the houses on Aylesworth. Or run that road by that retention pond, put it back out on Holdridge. It's made to hold the traffic. That's something to think about. So those are the issues I'm concerned about.
Questions? Thank you very much. Additional testimony? Additional testimony in opposition?
Hi, my name's Craig. I live at 1525 North 51st, which would be just about across from the last row house that's going to be, or is planned to be built. Uh, let's see if I can do this, you guys, here. Well, maybe I can use this one.
Could you share your last name with us, please?
Hallers, H-O-L-L-E-R-S.
Thank you.
All right, well, anyway, approximately. Okay, that's where Diane lives. I'm going to live, I live right here.
Okay.
All right. Just up across my driveway, right about here is where Tammy, Robert, and Joe live. All right? Right up about here is where we'd have Aylesworth and 51st. That's where Ron Brown lives, okay? I've been flooded. My driveway was flooded up about halfway on a halfway decent rain because of the drainage. The water over at Tammy's and Joe's and Robert's place has gone up to the sidewalk for the very same reason because it's not draining anywhere. Ron Brown has had water over the sidewalk into his yard. I've witnessed all of these. I didn't have to be told, I've seen it. I've seen Dead Man's Run hit underneath the bridge. That's another story. Okay. Down here is Holdridge Street. No sewer inlets at all, or that's what I call them, sewer, storm sewer inlets, for whatever storm sewer is along 51st, if there is one. No storm sewer inlet up here at Aylesworth and 51st. Okay? Right across from Ron Brown's house and right at the top here. Now, there is an input over here at 52nd and Aylesworth, or 50th and Aylesworth up here. Nothing down Aylesworth Street between those two. No inputs for storm sewer. That's why, well, I'm guessing that's why Ron Brown got flooded. That's why my driveway floods, okay? My concern is mainly the water. All right. So... So, um, and I tell you right now, I wish I had all the documents that, Mr. White Shirt, I don't remember your name. We all should have a packet of that information so that we can see what's going on here. We're in the blinds, you guys, I mean, I am anyway. All I know is what little information has been presented. Okay, so we've got flooding going on here, possibilities, all right? Traffic, okay. Um, I was sort of glad to hear that there's no driveways on these guys. But, you did talk about parking, all right? So these row houses, they're supposed to be parking in the parking lot, I believe. Otherwise, they're parking on the street. Fifty-first Street can't take any more parking on it. It gets congested the way it is, just as Aylesworth does, as the other person talked. These things have to be addressed. Um, I, I don't think enough thought was put into that, or into us, thinking of other problems that you guys didn't think about. Um, and the water quality basin, I'm not so sure about that either. Last one is, okay, these houses, uh, my note says they're gonna be elevated five feet. Maybe I got that wrong, you know, to get, how tall, how high, five feet? Okay, these houses are gonna be five feet up, okay? Now then, their front yards are going to be, uh, let's see, I believe they can be fifteen feet from the street, or they stay at twenty-five. I, I don't remember, see, I got questions and things, I think you guys, okay, so, it's gonna come closer to the street, all right? Fifteen feet. Okay, now you're up five feet, I'm six-four, so you're up probably, probably up about here, okay, that land. All right, are you gonna slope the land to the street? Are you gonna build a retaining wall all around all of this land? Because if you slope it towards the street, you've got, now I figured it out, but you've got thousands of square feet here that are not absorbing water anymore. Thousands of square feet of earth that are covered, that are concrete, all right? There's gotta be some concern in that. Because I've just, my dad had the basement completely remodeled, many thousands of dollars, and I don't want to see it flooded. So, we need some answers, you guys, we really do. And I think this is going just a little too fast. I think we all need to see blueprints, see, um, sight maps, see grade maps, see utility maps, everything, so we can see. But right now, I don't understand how they could say the storm sewer is gonna handle what's here. All right, that's my time, thanks for yours.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Additional testimony and opposition?
My name is Matt Allen. I'm at fifty-two-eleven Aylesworth Avenue. Uh, bringing up, everybody else has talked over everything else, but we all have family, friends that come visit. Where are they gonna park on these? I live right up here where this entrance exit is, live right up the corner.
Yeah.
So I live right up the corner. How many people are gonna be parking, blocking my driveway, trying to park in my driveway? It's like, have they thought about that? It's more, you got all this stuff, you have your drainage pond. Cornhusker, I drive down that every day during a good steady rain, my wheels get pulled to the curb. What do they plan to do about the stuff that doesn't drain into the basin? Our street still gets those things that are gonna pull you into the curb, even though we have the drains to catch it. So then you add more cars, more traffic, how you gonna handle that? I watch kids ride their bikes to the pool, ride them back, with the more traffic increase, how's that gonna affect the kids going to the pool? Because they use Fifty-second to ride their bike down, because it's not on a busy road, and it's a straight shot, just go around the curve, you're there. The other one is, it's the parking, but if something in this plan fails, what are they gonna do to correct it? Say the flood basin, water reservoir doesn't work like they calculated it out to work, and all of a sudden we get more floodwater into the yards, the streets, what plans do they have two years down the road? They see that doesn't work, what are they gonna do to fix it? And the, uh, like, the first person that spoke, I made an investment because of the property where it was, that what they called unsightly trees, I like. It's nice, it deadens the sound from all the other roads, catches some of the noise from Holdridge, keeps the noise from Forty-eighth area, catches that, so our neighborhood's relatively quiet. But, and then, the community garden, good idea. UNL offers the same thing, it's three blocks away. They supply you with everything, I believe. You just have to have the seeds and the elbow grease. And, a lot of that is mainly my only concerns. It's like, how are they gonna, also, if this is low-income housing, we're all human, we do desperate things when we're desperate. What are they gonna do if crime kicks up, if people start wandering into the backyards? I have a fence, we have a lot of dogs, some are big, we got two German Shepherds, I believe, in the neighborhood. I believe a couple, maybe some boxers, maybe some pit bulls, I'm not sure. But we have a lot of dogs. What's gonna happen if those kids entice those dogs? Or try to poke them with a stick, throw rocks? Kids do things with animals, what reaction can we get? And it's just one of those things I don't think was taken into consideration. How is this gonna be handled if it starts to become a bigger issue? And it's one of those things I would also like to know. Are there plans to corrective, are there corrective action plans if something fails in the future? If a resident comes in?
One more minute.
And they're not watching their kids, kids are just running around, taking stuff, walking into yards, how's that gonna be handled? And, I, also, how are they gonna supervise all the kids? School teachers have a hard time supervising people. I've been a playground monitor. It's hard to watch ten kids. They're fast, they're sneaky. How are they gonna handle that if that is not enough people, when they're outside playing? So, those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional testimony and opposition?
My name's Dave Romus. I live at fifty-two-ten Aylesworth. And I've lived there for forty-four years now. One of the reasons we moved into that neighborhood was because it was a quiet neighborhood. Uh, we were close to shopping, to schools, to parks. It was a nice neighborhood for our kids to grow up in. A few years ago, uh, they converted the apartment buildings on David Drive, David Drive and Holdridge, into low-income affordable housing. Uh, the kids that lived in those buildings were in our yard all the time, in our driveway. We couldn't get into our garage because there were bicycles laying in the driveway, uh, kids playing in our backyard. We had to put locks on our shed and on the garage because we couldn't keep them out of there. More affordable, low-income housing is just asking for more of that in the neighborhood. So I'm opposed to that, naturally. If this was such a great project, um, maybe Mr. Bowers should have this built across it, through from your house. So, well, maybe so. I know I don't want it. Storm drain water runoff, that is a concern. If the water from that, um, block is diverted to the street or to the storm drain, uh, if that, um, storm drain does not handle that water, where's it gonna go? Is it gonna go into our basements? Um, if that happens, uh, what can be done to fix it? Will it be too late? Um, I think more thought, more planning has to be put into this before decision is made. If I didn't make my voice heard, I wouldn't be a good neighbor. Uh, I hope that's all taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional testimony and opposition?
Uh, my name is Philip Zillig. I live at fifteen thirty-six David Drive. We've lived there, uh, since the seventies, uh, and have seen a lot of changes. I have one question for all of you. How many have actually driven around this block? Can I see hands? Two.
Three, four.
Two, three, four. Okay, five. I suggest that you drive around, and when you're doing that, go down David Drive. In the seventies, we had the, uh, fourplexes, sixteen of them, or sixteen units. I want you to check and see, do it at night, and see how many cars are on the street in front of those. David Drive gets a lot of traffic, again, they cut through there to go to Uni Park, get a lot of traffic through there. Uh, and Fifty-second, they get a lot of traffic too. Everything's been covered about the sewer and all that, and how it's going to be built. We have lived there all these years, and that area has been blighted, covered, city has not done anything about that. I don't know what the, what the problem was, that it got as bad as it is now. But if you've looked around there, you should know that it's completely covered and has been all the time we've been there. What the reason for that is, I don't know. Uh, we had a meeting about a week ago, and I'd like, everybody here that's against it, please stand up. This is a part of what was at Burger King when we had the meeting. I don't know what Mr. Bowers is talking about, about everybody being for it, because they're not. This is only a small portion of, I've taken time out to come down here and tell you about the problems. Parking and safety. The parking lot there has a way off of Fifty-second for in and out, and only one narrow road to over to Aylesworth. And if, have all the following and the people that are going to be using that, like I said, before and after school and all that, you can about imagine, and getting onto Fifty-Second Street is bad enough now, or getting onto Holdridge from Fifty-second, you ought to try that at five o'clock, or when there's a lot of traffic. And that's going to multiply it by how many, we don't know. There's a lot of problems, lot of problems, and we want you to think about that. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional testimony and opposition?
Hello, my name is Robert Schlaumann. I live at fifteen forty-five North Fifty-first. I have been a part of this property for the last forty-one years. My father-in-law has owned this home since the seventies. In the last few years, I have purchased it from him. Make upgrades, make life better. Throughout the years of him living there, there has been a sanitary sewer problem. Backups, city comes and jets, blows it in everybody's basement. So years ago, we put a back check in the sewer system. There is a manhole in my backyard that I check weekly to make sure that that sewer's not backing up, so the neighbors don't call and have a plumber come out. I don't know if I can get it on there. This is my property, right there. This is the manhole in my backyard. You're gonna add ten rows of houses right here to travel down this sanitary sewer, which has problems the way it is, and have potential backing up. Weekly, I have to check it. In the last three years, I've called city four times, Waste Management, to come out and clear it. That is my house, in about the middle of the ten-row housing. Parking's very tight on both sides of the street, and to get a truck down the street. Garbage trucks will fight to get down, there's no room. Stormwater has come up to the house. We're in two thousand twenty-three, really? Lincoln, Nebraska. Floodplain. Middle Lincoln. I daily, twice a day, before I go to work, and when I get home, I have a three-year-old female black lab. We go out front, we play. I have had to run out in front of numerous cars, so they don't run my dog over, because they're jetting down the road to get to their apartment building, to the rental housing. The property, here on the corner of Fifty-first and Aylesworth, is a rental, four-bedroom. Four to eight cars there, daily, down my street. Please tell me this is not a good project for this neighborhood. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I do wanna remind you, um, before you go, that, um, if, you know, and I don't know what's going on there, but if that's a rental house, and say it's college students live in there, we do have, um, rules that say that no more than three, uh...
I believe there's four living in the house, I believe.
And so you can call and report that, and we are a complaint-driven, um, so they can come out and check that.
I'm not a complainer. I, I see resolving issues instead of complaining about them.
Sure.
That's my life. I have a career that I've been in for thirty-five years, and resolutions, I don't create problems. Thank you.
Additional testimony and opposition? Okay, last chance. Any other testimony? Uh, staff questions?
Yes, please.
Yep, I think we have some staff questions. Tracy?
Sure. Um, can you tell us on Fifty-first Street, there's no changes to the setbacks there? Like, they're not requesting a waiver?
Uh, no, there are no setbacks along North Fifty-first Street. There is that reduction from twenty-five feet to fifteen feet along Aylesworth Avenue, is here, so it's this area right there.
Um, can you remind me, what's the normal setback?
Uh, twenty-five feet.
Okay. Um, was staff present at the neighborhood meeting that was held?
I was.
Um, was it well-attended?
Yes, I, I believed so. Um, I did have some issues, some people did call afterwards, um, from, who did not attend the staff, the staff meeting, who did not attend the neighborhood meeting, but I've had some questions, I've had some calls, I've had, um, we got one letter of support at one point, um, yeah.
Okay. Um, do neighborhood design standards apply in this location?
Um, neighborhood design standards, I believe those are reviewed during time of building permit? Yeah, so, um, a good catch, um, they are, those, those are, um, things that will need to be de- They are, those are things that will need to be discussed, but at this time, they're not being discussed. So it's, it's good that we have people looking at that, but that is at time of building permit.
And neighborhood design standards do not address, you know, like, a five-feet, you know, like, buildup?
That, I'm not, I'm not well-versed in that, I'm sorry.
I don't know if Steve wants to chime in for that. I mean, I don't think they do, but I just wanna make sure.
Okay. Well, yeah.
Yep, so what they're referencing is in the neighborhood design standards, which are reviewed at time of the building permit. It talks about the elevation, the first floor of new dwellings should generally match the pattern of half or more of the houses on the same or facing blocks. In other words, if the first floor, most of the houses are positioned three or four steps above the prevailing grade, new dwellings should have a similar height of the first floor. If most of the surrounding houses have one or no steps, new construction should generally match this characteristic. So in this circumstance, if somebody comes in at time of building permit and shows that because they also have to comply with the zoning standards for floodplain, they would request at time of the building permit to request a waiver to the design standards, which can be done administratively at the time of the building permit. And in this case, you would have to argue, I can't meet the prevailing pattern of the existing houses on the other side of the blocks because the floodplain standards require that I actually raise the house. And part of what they are doing here is that each of the individual dwellings will be on a lot, and that lot will be completely out of the floodplain, but the yard around them would still be in the floodplain, which is exactly what was envisioned with the new floodplain standards. And I would note, this standard applies whether you turn down the CUP or not. If they go ahead and build on the existing lots, they would have the exact same issue because even if you didn't have a CUP, you'd still have to raise the dwelling out of the floodplain and you would have to have your elevation higher than the houses across the street.
I do have some questions for Watership, that I think Watership Management will need So they're gonna be doing some grading on this site?
Yes.
To raise up those houses out of the floodplain and then kind of, in layman's terms, create a valley where this basin and, and that kind of stuff is gonna go?
That's correct.
Is this gonna change maybe how the water flows right now? I mean, I mean, I know that this is internal to the site, but will it also have effects off-site?
So the, because of the existing conditions out there, it is known that there is a, an issue with the sewer that they were complaining about, that we, we've done a master plan and to find these areas of concern, and these will be addressed at a future date, but it always based, it's always based on funding.
And most of that would be based off like a stormwater bond-type funding?
Yep.
Okay.
Stormwater bond funding.
And I also know that there's been a dead man's run study completed, and can you kind of tell us where we're at with that?
So that, the work that is gonna be done within that study is, does complete itself at 48th. And so everything upstream from there is not going to be affected by that current plan.
Which way would be considered upstream?
So to the east.
Okay. And then will that take any, maybe not this particular parcel, but other parcels out of the floodplain?
So there, so to the west of 48th, there will be some adjustments to the floodplain. And a lot of these, you know, with the new Atlas 14 rainfall data, some of this even may go in the opposite direction, so, because of the increase in rainfall. And this is not, this is not an annual increase, in case it's, they're wondering, it's a rainfall intensity increase. And so there will be, and we don't know how it's gonna affect the current floodplain, but we're assuming some elevation increase. And so, and that's why we're, they use Atlas 14 on this project, and so that's where the standards, why they're setting their elevation, where they're setting it.
So I wanna make sure I'm understanding what you're saying properly. So the work they're doing on dead man's run might take some properties out of the floodplain, but when we go and redraw the floodplain maps with the new data, it might put them back in?
There is a possibility of that. That is correct.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm not a hundred percent, I'm not involved that heavily in the dead man's run project, because it's a, it's a Corps of Engineers project and with the DNR. And we have some, we have representative from our staff on there, but I'm not one of those.
I think that's all I have.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
When did the city first start looking at their sanitary sewer and...
So the, I'm trying to remember the date on the, the last master plan, but I think it was in the early 2000s, that it was completed around 2010 or so. But we do have record information on, and, and most of it, it just shows, it was just a broad analysis where we have some issues of, of water that doesn't go, that the sewers are overwhelmed at, at given times. And it's using old, you know, we have had changes in our water, you know, in our rainfall. And so at the time that they were designed and built, they were effective, but they're no longer effective.
I know budget is a major issue.
Yeah.
But when could we anticipate those problems?
I couldn't be, I'm not the, I'm not the person that makes that decision, but, but that can be an inquiry, and we, we do follow up on complaints, and, and we try to address those issues, especially those issues that are known.
Well, the one gentleman calling the department four times to push the sewer clean, isn't that enough of a good point?
So if, if it's an issue of, of cleaning out the system, that would be within the street department that is there, and we do follow up on those typically. But I'm, I'm not aware of this one, so this would probably be something you can address with Tim, or I can address it with him to find a follow-up on it for you.
That would be a regi of these programs.
Sure.
And then I would suggest back to them.
Sure.
The results are.
Sure.
But following up on that, the, the idea is, is that with ten additional units in this area, how does that affect an area that's already adversely affected by the current situation?
So they are required, so that was the detention, the idea behind the detention waiver was that we had to make sure that they, wherever the water was going from this site, that the water, the capacity, there was capacity. Now, the sewer, the system that's on, on the west side, the streets, you know, the street that's handled on the west side does not go into that system. It's, it's, it's an opposing system that, that is being inundated. And that's why we, they, they had to address that and, and change the direction of their water to, their stormwater to go into the other sewer.
And then as a result, we've got this water quality basin and...
Yeah.
Additional questions?
I have a question just about basins in general. How those work with mosquitoes? How that water is moved, prevent that?
Sure, so...
Science lesson for me, please.
Sure. These water quality basins are required to be emptied within a forty-eight-hour period. And so they have to, they have to continue, because we're, we're seeking to slow the water down and to take sediment out, so they, they do slow it down, and they do hold it for a period of time, but ultimately, the, the goal is to have it completely drained within a forty-eight-hour period, which, which prevents it from being an issue with mosquitoes.
Thank you.
Do, do these basins have to be fenced?
It depends on the depth, but this is a very shallow one.
Okay.
So more likely than not, this would not have standing water in it all the time?
Plus, it is, you know, has a soil bottom, so it's gonna infiltrate into the bottom, so...
Additional staff questions? Rich?
Yes, Emma, Jessica, I believe, mentioned some other waivers that she thought would need to be addressed. Maybe this'll come up during applicant rebuttal, but can you speak to any of those?
I apologize. Could you remind me of the waivers that were mentioned? If it's, if it's regarding allowing the increase in density, that is a community unit plan. So a community unit plan is a special permit, which is what is allowing this increased density and the, the three homes, the multifamily, as well as the single-family attached or duplexes on smaller lots. The CUP is a special permit, which even without perhaps the Neighborhood Support Service, you know, even without the Neighborhood Support Service, if somebody wanted to come on here and build those ten units as close together as they are, they'd still need to come before the planning commission. It's not a waiver in, as the waivers within the special permit itself are. So if that answers your question.
And anything else would have to come back before us, if they required a waiver through the planning department, or through codes, building and safety?
Building, building design, I'm not entirely sure.
Sure, so the neighborhood design standards are administered by the planning department, and that just refers to items in terms of like the porch and the elevation and the pitch of the roof, those type of things. And those, if there is a waiver, often those go to the urban design committee, not to the planning commission. So again, for the, they're not requesting to change here in terms of the neighborhood design standards. What they've shown perhaps doesn't necessarily meet those, but those issues would be, and when I say not necessarily, it'd be certainly the elevation is one that it's not gonna meet. But that again, would be something that happened with any of them. But those type of neighborhood design standard waivers don't come to planning commission, they would, depending on what, which one they are, they would go to urban design committee.
Emma, can you remind me, was there a traffic study done with this?
There was not.
Okay.
So Steve Hendrickson with Planning Department. So traffic studies are not a requirement of a residential development nor of a neighborhood support services. And I may add that the typical neighborhood street can handle about fifteen hundred cars a day. So the number of traffic that is here is not one that causes a significant increase that would be detrimental to neighborhood. Is it an increase over what it is today? Sure, today it's a bunch of trees, but this is not that, something untypical that you would see in any other neighborhood. So it's more cars, but it's not the type of additional traffic that is unusual for what a neighborhood would be.
And I'm curious about the alley design, and that's certainly something that we can talk with the applicant about, but is it, is it anticipated that traffic will come in and out of 52nd Street then, or versus having that it will be, because it's a one-way alley out towards Alesworth?
Well, technically, it could go both ways. The alley along behind the units, the dwelling units would be, allow for vehicles to go both to and from Alesworth. However, it is anticipated that people will instead exit and enter along North 52nd Street simply due to its proximity to Holdridge.
Especially if they're not the actual residents.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, if they're, if they're using the Neighborhood Support Center, it seems like they would become in and out on that, on the...
Yeah, there wouldn't, if, if you're not living there, it seem, it's more likely that you're going to go through Holdridge and then North 52nd.
I just wanna clarify again, so that everyone's on the same page. By right, a developer could come in right now without this special permit and put in ten dwelling units, individual, single-family homes.
They could. And on that as well, parking is allowed on both sides of the street of North 51st Street. So if somebody came in and developed single-family homes, according to how they're plotted today, they, people could park along the street.
And it would have the same implications on the infrastructure?
Correct.
Yeah.
Additional questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Applicant rebuttal?
Hello again, Dennis Hoffman, Family Service, 501 House 7th. I just wanna take a minute to say thank you to the commission and also to the neighbors for expressing their concerns. Their questions are things that I would ask, too, if I had a project moving into my neighborhood, so no animosity there at all. I think they're making some good points, and I believe we've addressed all those through either planning or through working with Tim and Jeff. I would also like to add, just to be clear, that Family Service is a 501(c)(3) private nonprofit. We're not a government entity, so we do what other nonprofits do. We apply for grants and raise funds to help support projects like this versus relying on local tax dollars. The other thing I'd like to add, too, is that by Councilman Bowers' represented, Family Service does have a long tradition in Lincoln. We've evolved. Over the times, we started off as a charitable organization, and dating back to the early nineteen hundreds, provided housing to what was referred to then as wayfairs. So we have a long history of providing support services and housing to families in our community. And our recent past really includes more of that focus on youth development. I feel like we're experts in the area. We know how to manage kids in large settings. We do it every single day with Lincoln Public Schools, so those are not concerns of mine. And I just wanna assure the audience, too, that we would manage the environment appropriately, including the housing project. Again, the benefit to working with an agency like Family Service is we're not going anywhere. We're gonna hold this property for decades and even longer, and that we are a resource. So if there are problems with the tenants or with the community center, you have somebody to call. It's not a private developer that lives out of state or a for-profit entity that might not have the same concerns about community reputation and responsibility and frankly integrity, which I think Family Service carries a lot of. Thank you.
I, we have a couple of follow-up questions, would be my guess.
We're not done.
Yeah. Almost.
You can't get off the hook that easily.
Yeah, I tried.
I just wonder, the dump out onto Alesworth, and it might be a design question, is there a purpose in it? Why didn't we just have that lot turn around?
Uh-huh. I can, Josh, or Tim?
Yeah, so essentially, we have a, a parking lot that's a dead-end parking lot, if you will, on there. So it provides an access point from this long parking lot, but also, it also provides access, we don't have access so much for these units, but this gives access for these units here as well. So trying to keep the vehicles coming out and getting access to these, house these units here. So it's really kind of a more of an access for those units on the back.
I, I wondered about, where, what did I wonder about? The, I, I was thinking about the parking, I mean, there's parking on the street as well, but, I mean, it's anticipated that the residents will be encouraged to park in the parking lot, or, I mean, I'm assuming that can't be required, but, I mean, tell me a little bit about how you anticipate that.
Sure. Yeah, so part of the requirement or the expectation would be to use the parking lot. So yeah, as in the tenant landlord situation, we can't always control what the tenants do, but, and I don't believe through a lease agreement that we could require them to park in the parking lot, but that is something that we can explore.
Thank you.
I have another question for you. You have a local phone number, and is it, do you have one that's 24 hours a day?
Yes, we have an off, off-hours line as well, and it is local, yes.
Anything else for the applicant?
What kind of tenants will you be trying to put into these units?
As in family makeup?
Sure.
So yeah, the, like was mentioned, they'd be two- and three-bedroom units. It is our mission to serve families, so it would be families with children.
And I assume that you'll have some kind of vetting process?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so we would, we would be managing the properties like a usual landlord-tenant situation would, and we do the typical background and tenant checks for that.
And I assume, too, like, you might have someone that could stay there ten years, you could have someone that just stays there six months.
Yeah, correct. It would be a lease arrangement, so they could stay as long as they needed.
Additional questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move to closed public hearing. Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Public hearing closed. Second. Reiman Yost?
Good luck, Senator.
Yep.
I think Tracy Cor has a question, but maybe we can drill fences against those buildings, and that would reduce any of the water or stormwater or sewer problems that many of the residents have expressed. So I think the, obviously, our job is zoning, and we're supposed to look at zoning, and the other issues that come up are very legitimate, but they need to be working with wastewater or feeling a proper city regard for it. Try and put pressure on to move those projects up in the pipeline to get that taken care of. And I know that the city has done it in some other northeast areas and has solved the problem. I would hope that the city would be working with these neighbors to do the same. But as far as the proposal here, I think that it's well put together, it serves a great need in the area. And I think the idea of the play area and the community garden, I can tell you, at our church, we've combined a community garden with a major outdoor explorer classroom and, and private garden area. So I think that this is a benefit to the neighborhood. I will be supporting this project.
Anyone else?
I too will be supporting it. It's hard when you have kids and live in an apartment or duplex-like situation for them to have room to play outside. And I think that this is a, is a good design where it's giving them that room to go outside and play. I also like that it's going to give them other resources, like the, the garden. And, and that's not just when it's nice outside. They can go inside to the community building and use that for, for other resources as well. And I think that that's very important. Change is hard. I know that this has been pretty much vacant land for quite a while, and so change is also scary. And when it's kind of vacant land like that, you kind of feel like, oh, this is my property too, or you know, you, you have kind of a vested interest in that. And, and when you see it changing, it, it's, it's scary. It's hard. But I think that this is going to be a positive change for the neighborhood. I, I think it might help alleviate some of the problems that they have been experiencing, or at least get them on the radar of city officials so that they can be addressed properly.
I will also be supporting the motion. A lot of the things that I really like about how they are controlling the water is they are piping it. I really appreciate the efforts that you made in putting together that storm system calculations and how that water now in this huge area that hasn't been developed will be managed and maintained. The majority of the block will still be below that floodplain, so there'll still be the areas to help maintain that. But I do want to go on record that as we hear these issues that are east of 48th Street, we continue to help get that dead man run study from 2007 to continue to make those improvements. So the east of 48th are the three and four projects, and then it goes, continues on. So the city has done one, two, and three, which is really helping. And now let's help continue to, when we're behind the scenes, help maintain and get those improvements made, get the sanitary improvements made. When we have that opportunity as we look at budgets and make recommendations, keep that in our mind as we continue to move forward because we've heard a lot from the public in this area, and we can help with that by keeping our due diligence on it. So thank you.
I will also be supporting this project. I do like the complete neighborhoods concept. It's part of our comprehensive plan. And I hope that when things like the Makerspace become available, there might be people in the surrounding neighborhood that would want to use those facilities and resources or be able to have it become a part of the neighborhood. So I think that's great. And I also just want to say, as someone who has worked in human services for my career and have known and worked closely with Mr. Hoffman, that there are a lot of nonprofits in this community, and Mr. Hoffman is among the most ethical, knowledgeable, and committed to ensuring that our neighbors have equitable access to safe and quality housing, nutritious food, and supportive services that enhance the wellness of children and families. And I have tremendous respect for the work that he has done, especially around housing, and I'm very excited about the possibilities for family services to benefit our community in this way. So thank you for this project.
Cindy covered it better than I could. We've worked with Family Service for a lot of years, and they have a great reputation, so.
Shelley, will you call the vote, please? Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Approved 9 to 0. At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. I will take a motion for adjournment.
I would move that we adjourn.
Second, Joy. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you.